The United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've got this wonderful thing that we have the opportunity to do periodically, and that's to go ahead and to give an oath of office. The oath of office I'll be administering will be to -- and I presume I'm doing this separately.
There's the commission president, and then there's the police department.
Right.
And our judge is here for the commission president.
Okay, very good. And so our judge is here to administer the oath of office to our new president, Rocky Smith.
This is the part I like. Could you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Rocky Smith, Jr.
I, Rocky Smith, Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform -- perform the duties.
Of commission president of Oregon City.
Of commission president of Oregon City.
During my incumbency thereof.
During my incumbency thereof.
Congratulations.
Have you ever noticed that these oath of offices, they never ask you, have you ever read the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Oregon?
Sure. This is Kevin Carlson and Isaac Booker. They both just completed the Clackamas County Combined Agency Reserve Academy this last Saturday night. That runs from September until February. It's 285 hours of training they receive. It is usually on Tuesday and Thursday nights and all day Saturdays. They gave up a lot of their time unpaid to be volunteers for Oregon City, so we're really proud of them. A little bit about each one. They're both students at Portland State University, both majoring in criminology and criminal justice. And the funny thing, I gotta tell you a story about Isaac, and I know he's gonna hate this, but Isaac started out, he was doing a practicum at the police department, and he put in about 300 hours as part of his degree completion for Portland State University. And at the end of the 300 hours, we told him, he had to go away. You know, sorry, the 300 hours is over, and you can't hang out here anymore, Isaac. He looked at us and said, please, can I stay here? Do I have to go? So we found a place for him for code enforcement for a while, and after that, we found a place in court for him for a while, and he still wouldn't go away. So we finally figured out, we better make him a reserve officer. Isaac's father, Cornelius Booker, has been a reserve officer with us for a while, and he's in the audience too to watch this swearing.
Oh, wow.
Kevin Carlson and Isaac Booker.
Say, "I," and say your name.
I, Isaac Booker.
I, Kevin Carlson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the law.
That I will uphold the law.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties as a reserve police officer.
While faithfully performing my duties as a reserve officer.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
For Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations.
This would make twelve, right?
Great.
It kind of fluctuates, you know, but most of these people who are reserve officers are volunteers, they have full-time jobs, families, or they go to school full-time, so they're either hired or they're pre-adjuncts, and so they kind of have some blow, but these are two we have to be academy disaster. In our reserves, we're doing the same hiring standards that our regular officers do, remember? Through a background investigation, psychological investigation, background, excuse me, psychological examination, and so we're doing the same standards as our reserve officers are. So it's really a accomplishment for these two young men to be standing here now, they've done a great job.
I wanted to tell them, in the fall, in one of the terms, I teach an introductory statistics course for life sciences. You're often gonna roll.
You gotta watch it.
Thank you very much. That's great. I appreciate it. With that, first of all, I guess we're gonna take a look at the, we don't seem to have the adoption of the agenda, but did we mean to?
We're on three C.
We're on three C.
It's later.
Oh, okay. The annual report from the Friends of the -- oh, yes, we've got several things here. The annual report from the Friends of the Library, presented by Linda Orson.
I don't know.
Interesting. Well, thank you so much for inviting me here to give you my first annual report.
What? Wow. What the world's going on here? They're multiplying.
I've heard this rumor that things are gonna be happening here in Oregon City with robots, but this is ridiculous.
Yeah.
Anyway, I would like to thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Linda Orson, and I am the 2012 Chair of the Friends of the Oregon City Library Board. And the purpose of the Friends is to assist in bringing people together in support of all library service, to foster public acquaintance with resources, services, and needs of the library, to support and assist Oregon City Library Board, participate in programs to secure materials and aid beyond the regular library budget, and assist the library staff in the maintenance of its collections. And how did we do this in 2011? First of all, it was through volunteer support. We all, well, we have a booth at the farmer's market whenever it is clement weather. We can't set up during rain or heavy winds. We had 12 volunteers that donated 400 hours to the farmer's market last year, and volunteers at the Friends of the Library bookstore. From November 10th, 2010, to October 2011, we had 31 volunteers, which donated 3,734 and a half hours, which gave us a total of volunteer hours for last budget year, $4,134 hours and a half. And if you take that out to a pay equivalent, pay equivalent for the National Points of Light, which was 1847 for last year, that comes out to a grand total of donated time of 76,364 dollars and 22 cents from the Friends.
Congratulations.
Same to volunteers.
Good job.
Very good volunteers. We need more. And another way that we helped the library was through purchases and programs. We have rental, we had rent and storage space for the library for extra book storage and for book repair, and that was $2,400. The library gave us a wish list for a DVD cleaner, which they terribly needed because my DVDs are always so dirty. So we bought that for them also. That was their Christmas present this year, and that was $5,200. And we also bought cultural passes for last year, which was $985. The income, I also gave some sheets to be passed out, income and expenses, and some year-end information, which numbers just make my eyes roll, so we have it in front of you. And last year, income from the farmer's market was $2,746 and some change. Bookstore was $56,615. And we also get rental from the Three Rivers Artists Guild Art Gallery. 25 percent of their total sales goes towards the bookstore, and that was $13,015 for last year. One of the first things we did this year at our January board meeting was to sit down and kind of think about what we wanted to do this year, and set some goals. And among the goals were to locate and campaign for a new library site, bring in new members to the Friends. You all have little applications on your desks, and we have more over at the bookstore. Everybody is invited to join. The more Friends we have, the better, especially going forward with the library. We're also looking to create an online newsletter for the Friends in the library. We're looking into a mini libraries program, which was advertised in the newspaper several months ago, neighborhood, small neighborhood boxes for books. We're still working on that. TV and internet presence for the library, and we have already accomplished one of those. We put together a small public service announcement at the Willamette Falls Media Center. We want to thank all the people there for taking our hands and walking us through the process. But the video is on YouTube, and it's also on the library's website. And I think last time on YouTube, we had 150-some hits already.
Already.
And we're also trying to come up with combined events for the library and the bookstore to bring more people into the library and to know that we have a bookstore, and the bookstore is not the library, and vice versa. We're also have an event manager for the library and bookstore, me, for this year. We need to get coordinated. We really need to get more information into the bookstore about the library and vice versa. You see, my little friends here, there is a purpose to that. This Friday, we're having the Redlands Elementary Robotics Lego Team. We'll be here February 17th, from 10 to 4, all day, doing demonstrations. And then, February 23rd, we will have an author visit by Daniel Wilson, who wrote the book Robo-Pocalypse, which is going to be made into a major motion picture by Steven Spielberg. It will come out next July 4th weekend, 2013. So I would like to invite everybody to come to either one of these events, especially children, but adults are welcome.
Linda, why don't you tell people where the bookstore is located?
Across the street.
Yes, it is.
Right across the street. We've been there for five years, for five years. Karen?
Karen?
Where's Karen?
A little more. She's back there.
More than that. Well...
Public purpose is plenty at the Center and Seventh.
Center and Seventh Street.
Very good. Anybody that hasn't gone there, you get real deals. I picked up a book of Norman Rockwell pictures, many, many pictures in it. I think I only paid $4 for it.
Lot of good deals.
Good deals.
Real good deals.
Of course, all the art sales, art sales support the bookstore also, and the library.
Absolutely.
We have a lot of good artists over there.
Mm-hmm. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
Take my robots and go home and play.
Thank you. I'm going to, we have various committees that our members of the commission get assigned to, and I'm going to make those assignments now. Something a little bit strange on the presentation, so I won't read it exactly the way it is. Do you have it on a sheet?
You should have one up front of you.
Okay, very good. I'll read it off the, here we go. Okay, very good. The Metro Policy Advisory Committee, which is an advisory committee to the Metro Council, I'm appointing myself as representative, and the alternate is Kathy Roth. South Fork Water Board, myself, Betty Mum, and Rocky Smith. Portland, Milwaukee Light Rail, myself. Clackamas County Coordinate Committee, C4, Betty Mum and myself as alternate. Regional Wastewater Advisory Committee, myself. I wish they would have meetings, but anyway. The Main Rain Street Board Liaison, myself. Willamette Heritage Coalition. Eric Underwood will be our representative there, and I'll serve as the alternate. And the Oregon City Tourism Council, Rocky Smith. And the Willamette Falls Cable Access Liaison, myself. The reason, one of the reasons you hear me a lot is simply because we have people here that work during the day. Now, I work too, but my hours are pretty flexible because I've got my own business, so some of these meetings are daytime meetings. With those appointments, we'll now take time for citizen comments. We restrict ourselves to three minutes on these citizen comments. If you come forward and any comments you have to make, if you just simply introduce yourself, and whether or not you live in Oregon City. And I have Barbara Rankin, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Barbara Rankin, Oregon City, Barlow Crest neighborhood. This is about our home that we purchased in 2004, and we are the second owners. The home was built in 2000 along with several others as the neighborhood was being developed by Abney Revard. The previous owner gave us all the documentation he had on the builder, and there was also a building inspection done before we purchased, and again, the home passed inspection. Though at that point, since the siding was in place, it would not be obvious that there was no flashing on the windows. In 2006, the home was re-caulked, and some exterior molding was replaced due to rot, and the entire exterior was repainted. In 2008, further repair was necessary due to water damage on the interior window sills. So we caulked again. Same scenario occurred again in 2009, 10, and in 2011. In 2011, rainwater was actually leaking inside the windows in the house, onto the window sills, and this was on the south side of the house. So we called in a contractor in January, and he said he had repaired several homes in our neighborhood with similar issues. Well, the result is, we discovered that none of the windows had originally been, that were originally installed with flashing, and the previous owner had also tried to fix the water damage on some of the windows. The siding has been removed, Tyvek fabric, rotten and moldy woodwork, plywood, needless to say, the windows came out. On the interior of the house, all the moldings were removed as well, revealing rot and mold on the 2x4 structure of the window frames. All of this has been documented with photos, and $11,000 later, our house is almost back in order. So the reason I'm here tonight is to let the city know that somewhere along the line, these homes were inspected, and they did not have flashing around the windows, and they were passed. So I think we need to look at the codes and the requirements for housing developments and do the job, you know, proactively, so this doesn't happen. We have only repaired one side of our house for $11,000. There are three other sides. But fortunately, there's no leakage there, so we're not gonna fix something that isn't broken at this point. This could all be avoided if the inspection had been done correctly. So as I said, there are several other homes I'm aware of, and whoever the inspector was in 2000, I hope he's doing a better job these days, or his guidelines regarding inspection are brought up to standards.
Well, thank you for bringing those up. We appreciate that. David, do you want to say anything?
I actually heard that this was gonna be a complaint from the neighborhood, and unfortunately, I don't think this is gonna be the only, the only house or the only scenario. The assumption about the inspector, though, is not the correct one. The state building code at the time, these homes were inspected, allowed that, and didn't require flashing, and they have since changed the state building code. So they've changed it, and so it wasn't an inspection problem, it was a problem with the code. And I'm glad that the state's addressed it, but any of us who have a house that's more than 10 or 15 years old probably has a house that today wouldn't pass inspection because of things they found. And it's always unfortunate when someone has to deal with that, whether it's a major thing like asbestos, or a lesser thing like windows. It really adds up, and maybe the CD director has a few more comments, but...
I just wanted to reiterate that this wasn't anything that the inspector did incorrectly. The state building code, which Oregon City has no control over, we just implemented, specifically allowed self-flashing windows. What that means is you did not need to put flashing in if you used self-flashing windows, which is what Abney Revard used on those homes that they built up there. So I just wanted to clarify that this has been addressed through the state building code, once they realized that these were not functioning as designed. Unfortunately, obviously, that took the issues that you're hearing about tonight to come to light. But once, I just want to reiterate, this was not an inspection problem. This was a state building code faulty design of self-flashing windows issue.
Thank you.
Well, I do appreciate you bringing it forward. I mean, at some point, we learn about these things, and that's how the codes got changed. I presume that's been the case here, but...
It is.
If we don't hear, come on, you can come forward again. The ability to hear these constructive concerns and complaints are really meaningful to us.
Well, I just wanted to say, anybody that's concerned about their own home, mostly the south side because of the UV and the rain and the way the weather comes from. So that's the side that failed, and the east corner, southeast and the east. The north seems to be okay.
Has anyone looked into, remember when we had the siding issue, was it Louisiana Pacific or Georgia Pacific, whatever? And then there was eventually some settlement for the people that had that siding.
We have hardy plank.
No, but I mean, for the windows. Has anyone looked into the windows being designed improperly and filed a lawsuit or anything against, or claim against the company?
We don't, we can't identify the windows.
Oh.
There's no label or anything on them.
And the builders? Don't know, do you know where the builder is? I'm not telling you how to sue somebody.
Out of business is where he is.
As well he should be. Out of business.
So was there more than one vendor that covered this, what you call self-flashing windows?
I haven't, I don't have that, I don't have that information right now.
Well, then, if I come down right to here, the, we're going to get the, we got that. We got, I did that. We've had the comments. And so now, now we get to adopt the agenda, which I thought was some time ago. So is there any items to be pulled out of the consent agenda, or anything else you want done in the ordering of the agenda?
I'd like to pull the minutes from January 21st.
Okay. And that is eight?
Eight C.
Eight C.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. We don't have any public hearings scheduled, so we'll go into general business. This thing is jumping away from me all the time. But I'll come down to here. Anyway, we have before us the general business appointment of, oh, the appointment of a new city commissioner, of course, and this is, we had some interviews that we conducted on Tuesday. We had 10 people. We had some excellent candidates. We were really pleased with the candidates that came forward. I can suggest some ways that we might approach this. One is, we might want to make nominations of individuals, if you wanted to, for consideration. How would you want to put it forward?
I would like to, well, we came up with six.
Right.
Last time.
Right.
So I'm not really sure. I would take it that those six were ones that we were nominating.
Okay. I didn't know if we had, if any of us had gone through and actually screened down the ones that they thought about. I had, and...
Yeah, I did that on my original matrix, so that's why my matrix was so different from everybody else's.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm just wondering, it may be, may be convenient for the commission to think about writing down the names of your choices in sort of your order of preference, and turning those into the clerk to tally those, if that's your preference, that's just one way of doing it? Or you can make nominations as you, as you were thinking?
Did you have the names there of those six that were put forward?
So do you want us to, okay, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. What is this?
Yeah, we're writing on the...
It's just a tool that you can use. I didn't know what you were going to decide, so I was trying to be...
Well, I'm going to, what I'm going to suggest is that we, I don't know that we have to write all of them down. I presume...
Top three?
Just the top...
Top one or two. You know, if you have one specific, or if you have two, my suggestion was actually to go ahead and individually nominate people. And among those, we could make our selection, and then we could go ahead and vote accordingly on here.
Why don't we go ahead and hand two in?
Okay.
And then see where we go from there.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That'll work.
I did three.
You can only get two.
I'm an over G.
Your number ones.
I'm confused by the round one.
That's just, don't worry about it.
Don't worry about that.
We'll get the two, we'll get the two counts, and then we'll find out how many people we have.
Want me to pass it over?
Yeah. Oh, I'm gonna get yours.
Yeah, I...
Somebody, you took them...
You were together in these two.
Okay. So two of you gave three names, and two of you gave two names.
Oh, just take the first two.
If they're in that, they'll have a order. What did you do?
Take the first two.
I did my order of preference, and I presume the rest of it is...
Okay, all right, I'll do it this way. Just do it that way. All right. First two.
But you only did two.
Well, I was only supposed to do two.
Yeah, I know.
Rocking County followed the rules, Abney and Doug did not. Does that surprise you?
Well, no, I filled in two.
Oh, well, okay.
All right, so you want me to give you the top?
Yes.
Okay, the top two are...
Those are the two votes, right?
No.
You said the first two.
First two.
Those are the only two that are on all our lists.
No, and then the others. Did you want to know what the others were, the second?
Second round.
So for first position, we have both Kevin Young and Carol Polly. Is that right?
Well, you should have four.
Is that the round one?
You should have four.
Well, she did.
Of round one.
She said there are two votes for each of them.
That's right.
She said three.
Three. Or three for Kevin Yell, three for Carol Polly.
But that can't be right.
No, that can't be right.
That's got to be first... I mean...
So if you're looking at round one, there should be four slips.
Yeah.
And we didn't fill... Right. When we... You turned in three, two. When I put mine on, I didn't deal with the...
Scratch it out?
Yeah, I didn't deal with the... I just put two names.
Yeah. So what?
So we're going to draw from the hat then, or?
That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I guess my question is, my question is this. You got... It appears that you have... Did you only have two names, period?
And then I have three other names, but there's one of each.
Okay.
So you have three for Carol, and you have three for Kevin, and one of three other people.
Okay.
So you got it narrowed down to two.
So we have it narrowed to two.
Now we got it figured out.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
But wait a minute. I have a problem with that still. There's only four of us, and that's six votes.
I know. I did two.
So what are the first rounds? What are the four first-round picks?
Well, he said he didn't pay any attention to his priority in listing the two people. So I'm not sure that's going to work for us here. So...
So I guess that's the most often...
It has to mean that three of us somewhere or another put down Kevin Young, and three of us somewhere put down Carol Polly.
How about if we all just put down one name on one paper?
And we'll do it again. We'll send it out among these two. Are we agreed?
How about if I just write mine?
Among these two, we'll hand it out again, and we'll do another roll.
I'll give you each a bow.
Okay, I'll sign my name.
Mayor, make sure that's in order of priority.
Well, we're getting one.
You've got mine.
So we'll assume... Well, soon that's the work priority.
And I sign my name to mine. You want us to go to Park Place? I'd love to go to Park Place. Are you having a party at your house, Tom?
My...
Chris, let's... Chris, we're partying at Tom's house.
My dog's a secret.
Oh, God.
I won't even tell him, right?
Sign your name.
You can't write yourself in.
I'll see right behind you.
Don't worry about that. I know.
What was that TV program, right?
Jeopardy.
Jeopardy, and that's not the tune you're on. Well, then it's not Jeopardy. I'm doing the right tune.
It must be another one.
Green Acres, maybe? I think it goes back probably to the 60s.
That guy was in our elevator one time at work. The guy that played in Green Acres. Eddie something.
Eddie Arnold.
A lot of people came here. They were in trouble.
Okay, we have three to one. Three to one. Three for Carol Polly and one for Kevin Yell.
I really like to congratulate us. We...
Given Paul.
On that, really?
No, I really do, because, you know, I mean, it was a great process, and apparently two people rose up out of 10, and they were also good.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smith said he wanted to have unanimous consent. Well, I don't know if we ever quite get that, but the point is, apparently, we all... Well, three of us, we all came up with those people.
I think so. I think so.
And I think that's tremendous. And I'm really pleased. I couldn't be more pleased with the process. That's great.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you so much. All right. The other thing we have here is the Resolution 12-0 for supporting efforts to create Willamette Falls National Heritage Area and urging designation of such by Congress. Now, I had put forward a resolution, and the only thing that I was wondering was if there was any other input. If there isn't, if there isn't, we probably could probably go forward with the resolution. Was there any other input?
No, I thought it was good.
So do I have the resolution to read here somewhere? I probably do.
If you have to touch documents?
There you go, right there.
So I'm about to read a resolution. Before I read it, let me say what this is and what this isn't. We have a committee that's looking forward to putting forward a Willamette Falls National Heritage Area. It's a federal designation. Some people believe there's money that comes with it. There is actually, I don't think, any money that comes with the designation. However, it does elevate the area to a status that's recognized, and ultimately, we would hope that would be possible source of revenues to help us out in our historic designation of this area, but also would be something that would attract tourists to the area. And so therefore, I'm going to go ahead. This is a resolution supporting efforts to create a Willamette Falls National Heritage Area and urging designation of such by Congress. Whereas the national heritage areas are designated by Congress as places where natural, cultural, and historic resources combine to form a cohesive, nationally important landscape; and whereas the Willamette Falls area is an important nexus of the geological formations created by the Missoula Flood, including the Willamette Meteorite, and the foundation of the unmatched fertility of the Willamette Valley; and whereas the Falls area was an important gathering place for fishing and trade amongst numerous tribes for century prior to Western settlement; and I don't know if I skipped one here in the jump.
I think you've done so far.
You've done transportation.
Whereas the Falls has been and continues to be an important transportation hub for trade, commerce, and recreation; and whereas, following discovery by Western explorers, the Falls became a focal point for early trappers and traders, including the Hudson's Bay Company and John McLaughlin... McLaughlin? Whereas these trading activities led to the establishment of an industrial base at the Falls in the first half of the 18th century; and whereas, the 2,000-mile journey of the Oregon Trail ended at the Falls area, making it a destination point for one of the largest migrations in human history; and whereas, this focal point of industry and migration resulted in the founding of Oregon City on the east bank of Willamette Falls; and whereas, Oregon City became the first chartered city west of the Continental Divide; and whereas, Oregon City became the capital of the Oregon Territory, and later the first capital of the State of Oregon. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the City of Oregon City supports the efforts of the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition to attain national heritage status for Willamette Falls, urges the National Park Service to find that such status is merited, and urges Congress to designate and create a Willamette Falls National Heritage Area. Thank you.
Move to adopt?
I don't... I just have to do the resolution.
Oh, that's all?
Yeah, yeah. It's one of the powers of being a mayor. I get to do resolutions.
That's a proclamation.
Yeah. It has to be voted on.
Oh, this is a resolution. This is not a proclamation. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 12-04.
Right here, second.
Second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Passed? Very good. Thank you. And with that, we polled the minutes of January 21st from the consent agenda.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a correction on page... Page seven, under... Let's see. Page seven, paragraph 2, 3, 4. Commissioner Smith asked the commission to set a goal of being... Oh, sorry, that's not it. The third paragraph down. Commissioner Smith asked how to utilize the current Amtrak station, about renting the building, et cetera. It says potentially using part of the building for the interpretive center or other tourist activities. That's not what I was saying at all. I was... So I think I said... I probably said something like as in a visitor's center, not meaning the visitor's center across the street, but that when we consider renting out the Amtrak station, that we leave at least a small office in that building for the possibility of dealing with the visitors at the platform there. So whether that's a ticket station, whether that's just a visitor's window, or whatever, something. But I think that got confused with what I was talking about, the interpretive center across the street. So I just wanted to change that.
Excuse me, was that on page seven you said?
Page seven. Third paragraph down.
Okay.
And that's it?
That's it.
If you want to make the... If you want to approve those with the changes, we can do that.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll move to approve eight C with the change.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. With that, can we go ahead and have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, A, B, and D?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye. With that, we'll go into communications from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a transition, while you were just on the topic of refreshing your memory about who said what at the goal-setting retreat, one of the things we're going to be bringing forward for you after the new commissioner takes their seat with you is the approval of those, the goals and priorities that you established at the retreat. And so I have copies here for you. These are not in the booklet form that they will ultimately be in, but these are a form that we would like you to look over and make sure this reflects your recollection of the events that day. And then if you have any feedback, any changes, whether you're okay with them, or you see something that doesn't reflect what your recollection is, let us know between now and the next meeting, so we can address that.
Okay.
And the next item is Nancy Crush. I was going to give a little report on the TRIMET. Somebody ask at the last meeting about the TRIMET routes?
That'd be me.
Nancy?
Good evening. As you know, TRIMET has been having to determine how they're going to cut their budget because they have some problems with their deficit. And they... Some of you may have participated in the survey. They had an online survey to see how would you balance the TRIMET budget. And it was really a fun survey to do, but it really kind of made you understand the struggle they have to go through, just like any government agency. Anyway, I wanted to let you know that in terms of what... They are going to make some route changes that will reduce some of the service for... These are the two routes that are going to be changed that most closely impact Oregon City. And I, to be honest with you, I think we're doing pretty good on these cuts. The 32 Oatfield line that goes between the town center, Clackamas Community Town Center and our Oregon City Transit Center, they are going to discontinue Saturday service. So I think the downfall for that is folks that use the bus to go to the mall on the weekend.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then the other one that is getting some cuts is the 34 River Road route, and that goes between Milwaukee and the Oregon City Transit Center. And they're just going to discontinue trips from downtown Milwaukee at 7:26 PM and from Oregon City Transit Center at 7:00 PM. So there's minor adjustments there to the schedule. There is an open house also that anyone can attend if you have comments about these. And there's a whole list of changes, but these are the ones that directly impact our community.
Right.
And tomorrow afternoon at Clackamas Town Center in the community room, which is down in the lower level, it's kind of hard to find if you've never been there. But from 4:30 to 6:30, they'll be having an open house for Clackamas County residents to go if you have comments you want to voice. The Clackamas Town Center.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I did forward this information to our Transportation Advisory Committee, so they would be in the loop.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions on that issue?
No.
Okay. Also, I wanted to ask commissioners if you recall the memorandum you received from Mr. Tony Conkle regarding the transit commercial vendors. I thought it was a very thorough, well-written memo, and I didn't receive any questions or feedback from you after we sent it out, so I'm assuming that that satisfied your interest in that topic, and there's no further action we need to take. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then also, there was a little bit of a flap in the last couple of days about a newsletter from the Park Place Neighborhood Association chair, and I asked the city attorney to look at that. And, you know, before he says what he's going to say, this is an ongoing dilemma. It's very hard to legislate good behavior. There's challenges there because both sides are still maybe not as harmonious as we'd all like them to be in the relationships. But I heard a suggestion that we have a uniform set of bylaws, and I think that's an excellent idea. However, in the middle of the controversy that there exists, I'm not sure the timing is ideal for that. But I did want the city attorney, he took a look at the actual newsletter that went out, and I wanted him to have a chance to comment to you in case you had any questions.
Sure. And I don't know how in-depth you want. If you have more questions, let me know. But essentially, there's... Oregon state law prohibits using public money to advocate for or against a particular measure. And looking at what was in the commission, I mean, in the newsletter, although we might choose to word it differently, we don't think there's advocacy of, you know, you should vote for this measure because. So, you know, at the level we've looked at it, I just don't think there's that advocacy. There's a problem with the newsletter that would cause an issue with the Secretary of State.
Okay, great. So we're good legally?
Yeah. Any other comments or direction on that?
Well, I'm sure it's going to come back to us.
Well, no, you know, for example, basically because it was done by the previous mayor, but every quarter, I write a piece in our trail news, and I don't vet it with the commission. I've never heard the commission ask me to vet it. I don't think I put anything controversial or...
You could recommend some cookies once.
That'd be nice.
But anyway, yeah, I think that's right. I did, didn't I? Poised to buy donuts. Anyway, the... I guess the... I guess I have a hard time identifying the phone. I don't know.
Yeah, it's my own opinion. So, and moving on to my reports, we're starting to really get into the nitty-gritty of our budget presentation based on the goals that the commission has identified. And David Wimmer, now that he's finished with the audit and is fully involved in the budgeting process, he went back and checked our fund balances from a year ago to see, compare apples to apples where we were one year ago. And I'm just so pleased with our executive staff and the commission and all of us working together to try to contain costs and operate our small but local government as efficiently as possible, if we could just get Congress to do what we're doing.
Yes.
Our general fund is up 8.27 percent. And this is in an environment that isn't ideal. I know that we identified a new position, and then, of course, there's also the Assistant Finance Director position that we didn't fill this year because we're waiting for the new finance director to be hired, which is logical. So we're doing a really great job with our finances, and I'm so proud of all the folks that are involved in this. It isn't just, just me or just any of us up here. It's the whole team working together, every employee in the city, watching the dollars that we spend and trying to make sure that when we do spend money, we're doing it efficiently and we're not spending where we don't need to. So that's a good position to be in going into the budget process. Then I also want to remind you that city offices are going to be closed Monday, February 20th, for President's Day. The pool is open, but the library, Pioneer Center, Cemetery, City Hall, and the rest of the facilities will be closed on that day. And then Scott Archer is going to tell us a little bit about an event that they've started in the Parks Department, the Daddy Dinner Dance, which I think is just the coolest thing. And I just wanted him, when he told me about this program, I just thought this was something you'd want to know about as well as the community. So Scott.
Thanks, David. Yeah, this past Saturday, we held our eighth annual Daddy Daughter Dinner Dance, 4D. And once again, as it has been every year, it was a sold-out event. We had 160 participants, and it's just one of our, I think, really our marquee activities that we do as a park and recreation department for the year. It just, people go away just raving about the event and, how do I sign up for next year already? And it's just, it's just a great event. We have the participants, it's fathers and grade-school-aged daughters, and everybody gets dressed up to the nines, and we do a professional photo that they go home with, and everybody gets a nice dinner. It's held at the Abernathy Center. Food and prizes and dance contests and all kinds of fun stuff. So we, we had that successful event once again this past weekend, and just a lot of fun.
And I can tell you, my son and his daughter go, had gone every year. Now she's in seventh grade, so now she can't go. So that was kind of disappointing. So I think you should just raise that age up a little bit.
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't tell anybody no, but it might look a little out of place.
Yeah.
I also took my daughter until she was a little bit older. It was a lot of fun, yeah. It's a great event, so.
Yeah, they had a great time.
I think we got an issue of fairness. What are you doing for mothers and sons?
Bowling.
We were doing a mom and son bowling event, but it wasn't as well-attended. It was a little hit and miss on that event. We have acknowledged that, though, in fairness.
There has been bowling.
I'll tell you, since, Scott, since you're talking about that event, you know, this last summer, you had a new event in the parks, and you, maybe this is a good opportunity for you to talk about what you're planning to do this summer.
Are you talking about the movies?
Yes.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, this last summer, we decided to try a couple of movie nights in the park where we set up one of the large inflatable movie screens. We did this at Wesley Lynn Park. And the first, the first Friday that we did it, we had maybe 150 people, and then the second time, a couple of weeks later, we had probably 400 or so people. And based on that, we did it as kind of a trial run to see how well-received it would be, and based on that, we're going to bring it back again this summer. We're going to add two more. So we're going to do four, four summer movies in the park. So watch for those in the Summer Trail News and on our website and in the various places that we advertise.
And what's really nice about this, it's in a very different location of the city, and I think it's important to try to get our recreation program spread out more, and I think this is great.
Yep.
It's a great event. I went to both movies, enjoyed them.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. And just while we're on the topic, in case, this is kind of recent news, but sort of a pre-announcement that the summer concerts in the park, typically, we had, the last few years, we had the Touchables kind of be our end-of-the-year group, and they always had the biggest crowd. It was 50, 60, 70s cover music and really popular, and they, that band broke up, and we ended up having to kind of fill that slot last year. Well, now we've got coming this year, we just inked the deal this week with Johnny Limbo and the Lugnuts.
Oh, nice.
Everybody knows about them. They're really popular, and so they're going to, they're going to play the final concert of our concert series.
They're really old, too.
Hey, 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 hey.
They're seasoned.
Hey, 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 hey. Seasons.
They're very experienced, and they're very good. So that'll be fun.
Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have this evening.
It's my turn, and I'm sure I'm going to let Tony Conkle introduce it, but I would like to talk about the House bill that's come out of the Agriculture and Natural Resources Committee that is of concern to us, if you would.
Sure. So it was brought to our attention during this short legislative session that we're having down in Salem right now, a proposed House Bill 4090. What it effectively, the original intent of it was to address a property over on Bonnie Slope in east west Multnomah County that was having difficulties because of jurisdictional. It was, it was in Multnomah County. It was directly adjacent to Washington County, and there was a service issue there of Multnomah County not being able to provide the service to the property. Washington County had subdivisions developed right up to the property line, right up to the county line, and the jurisdictions couldn't come up with a way to provide the services to this developable piece. So that, that legislation grew to include the whole state and was then narrowed down and targeted to specifically the metro region, which includes Oregon City. And what it effectively said was that a property inside of an urban growth boundary but not within the city limits for topography reasons, legal reasons, service provider unwilling to provide the service, the landowner in the county property that's within the UGB could pay for and receive those urban services and create their own essentially service districts, which would then allow urban levels of development in the county outside of city limits inside of our urban growth boundaries. This is obviously a concern to us because of the money and time that we have spent looking at where, how, and when we want to expand the city limits of Oregon City. There are equity issues concerning taxation rate difference between a county resident and a city residence who would essentially be receiving the same urban services. There are jurisdictional and governance issues. Who would have governance and responsibility over these urbanized county lands inside of our urban growth boundary? There was also issues concerning the obvious circumventing of local rule in most jurisdictions that would include the decision of the city commission to make local land use decisions, and in the instance of Oregon City, the decision of the voters, of the citizens, to decide when, where, and how we annex this vote. This law would circumvent that process. It would essentially, what the bill essentially says is that regardless of what the local decision-maker finds, there does not appear to be any reason that a local body could deny providing or services being provided whether by the city or another service provider to allow urban development in the county. So the mayor and I, I've been working with the League of Oregon Cities as well as other groups to work with our representatives on the House side. It was out of the Agriculture and Natural Resource Committee. Mayor Neely and I went down and testified to that committee. Yesterday, I was down there as well. They held a work session and then passed it out of committee to the House. If it makes it out of the, out of the full House, it'll then go to the Senate, and we're unclear now as to what route that would take, but we are continuing to monitor this bill.
It is clearly not in our interest. It would also negate voter-approved annexations. Mayor Ogden of Tualatin has a mayor's meeting once a month, and mayors from all over the region. I introduced this issue to them. At that time, most of the mayors were not aware of it. And then at a subsequent, there's a, on a not-quite-a-monthly basis, Metro President Tom Hughes has mayor's meet with him, and we had that as a topic of conversation at that particular meeting. So the word is going out, but I don't, I think a lot of jurisdictions were completely unaware that this was, this was coming, and it is focused on the metro region. I mean, it's very specific.
Mayor, if I might ask, is the mayor's group, the other mayor's group that you're part of, are they contemplating a letter?
Yes, I've asked, I've asked Tony to put together some things, and I'll be sending out a draft to them, yes.
Are there about 16 mayors in that group, as I recall?
That's correct. I don't, I don't think King City or Johnson City comes in, other than that, and the others too.
Well, my difficulty with this, with this bill is that it's the wrong, it's the wrongest of wrong ways to address what they're trying to get at. That's, that's what bothers me about it, because it encourages urban-level services through special service districts, where it greatly increases costs, and cities can provide those services. And I just think there's a better way to go about it without eviscerating Oregon land use law and the history behind it.
If you think about the committee it came out of, it's clearly people who probably own ag land and want it developed, because apparently Agriculture and Natural Resources Committee feels that they're also involved not only in growing crops or growing houses, and would not be the kind, wouldn't be the kind of the committee that you would think something like this would come out of.
Better ways to manage growth.
Anyway, that's the major, major topic. Any other reports?
Uh-uh.
Hearing none?
I believe there's some, a couple of appointments.
Oh, a couple of appointments.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me, there are a couple of appointments. Thank you for catching this. Yes, I'm appointing Lisa Norman to the Parks and Recreation Committee. She's a very good person to have there. And also appointing Bob Burns to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Terms, the terms of Lisa are from February 15, 2012, to December 31, 2014, and for Bob Burns, from February 15, 2012, to December 31, 2013. I might mention that there are also two openings on the Traffic Advisory, Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee that are open. Other than that, all our slots are either filled or the interviews are going to shortly take place for filling those positions. And with that?
We're going to go into exec.
We're going to go ahead and adjourn into executive session.
Okay.